1982 graduate of Kent County High School. Two terms on the school board, served a six-year term and a four-year term. Served two years as the board president, four years as the board vice president. My daughter graduated in 2011 with the Salisbury University graduated and majored in biology, monitored chemistry, she's going to dental school in the fall. My son's a graduate, uh, excuse me, a junior at Salisbury. He graduated Kent County High School in 2013. He's majored in education. I run a business in Kent County. I'm the owner operator of Red Acres Farm, Harry T. Williams and Son, which is a sixth-generation family farm. And this past year, we just started a business called Red Acres Hydroponics where we grow high-skin lettuce and herbs. I'm running for school board because there's a lot of knowledge that goes into it and I've been on the board for 10 years and I think I can still contribute it to the school system. Thank you.
My name is John Queen. I am president and co-founder of the Bay Side Hoya's and also CEO of the Hoya C college preparation program here in Kent County that serves Kent County middle school students. So what I'll do for my qualifications is break down the two programs and also throw a little tidbit here and there of the things I do in the community in regards to students and youth in Kent County. The Bay Side Hoya's, Hoya's being an acronym for helping our youth achieve success. It's a youth program started here in 2013 with myself and two family members, PA2 and P2 in Kent County. Our mission statement was originally for young men 11 to 17 years of age. But what happened was it was a void in the community so big that the whole community kind of swooped in and wanted to be a part of this program. So in our program, some of the things we do is have kids, and everything I say is mandatory to be a part of the Bay Side Hoya's program. Community service, we try to go out once a month and do community service learning hours to this date right now. We've given over 750 hours of community service to Kent County. Also, we try to have our kids maintain a 2.0 grade point average. We try not to kick kids out of our program. So if a child has a 1.3 and works towards a 1.7, get a pat on the back, that's improvement. Also with that, we try to get them in their later years in high school, juniors and seniors, starting to look towards goals on being in the world and community to go out, communities, not community service, 32nd mark. Military, four-year institution or trade school. Hoya C Pip Quickly is of course Hoya's helping our youth achieve success, college preparation intervention program, which helps sixth and seventh graders for a teen month period with career readiness, college preparation, and also caregiver development. We actually work with their families and community as well. Thank you.
I want to thank the league for hosting this forum and all of you for taking the time out to come. Obviously, my name's Steve Atkins and for most of my life, I've lived in the county and was educated through the Kent County school system. Like Brian, I graduated from Kent County High School, classes 76. For many years, I've been told that I should run for school board, especially six years ago when I first ran for county commissioner. My thoughts during the past two commissioners' election was I could best help the education system as a commissioner, the way I still think that so, but unfortunately, I wasn't elected. So why do I want to run now? I want to see a strong school system. Cleveland's one of the best economic drivers for the county as far as moving forward, but still has ways to go and I want to be there to keep it moving in the right direction. During the past 15 years, many of my volunteer hours have been working for the benefits of the children of Kent County. I've attended the majority of the board of education meetings for the past dozen years. I'm a longtime member of the PTA. Cleveland terms as an executive officer of the Kent County High School PTSA, president of the Kent County PTA Council, and a member of the Maryland State PTA Board for a year. Also worked as a parent resource specialist for special education in the school system. So I know the special education system very well. Been a member of and a former chair of the Adolescent Substance Abuse Coalition. The group supports post-pron, I helped with it as a committee member and a volunteer at the event. Decisions made by the school board should be those that are not what's best for our children, but also what's best for the voters and taxpayers of Kent County. Think about it, nearly half of the annual budget goes to the school system. Shouldn't it be spent in the best way possible to serve its children and the community?
I also want to tell over, while my educational background includes a bachelor science in music education from Delaware State University, a master's of divinity degree from Paul and Theological Seminary in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, and graduate study towards a master's in management with public administration from Bloomington University. One of the greatest things that I pride myself on in terms of my qualification is the fact that after 29 years as a public school educator in the state of Delaware, I found the time to come back home from, to the school district that I graduated from, to take time to sub and serve in the public schools. That has given me firsthand knowledge as to what's going on with the teachers, the students, the staff, the cafeteria workers, the custodians, the bus drivers, everybody in the line, including the parents, that allow me to be able to formulate ideas and things that will be able to be effective in our public schools. I also served and have been appointed to serve on the board of the library, the trust board trustees here at the library. I'm also a member of the local management board for Kent County, which are both appointed positions by the county commissioners. I've seen a decline in the school system since I've been out and I believe I bring the proper mix of knowledgeable management skills and practices, a willingness to seek and satisfy the needs of the people, a thorough understanding of the difficult nature of classroom management, and an optimistic point of view of the future greatness of the Kent County public schools and those who pass through it. Now, as a sub, I'd mentioned, I get a chance to be out on the front line and see what the teachers are going through. I've had a chance to talk to different administrators and find out what it is. And through my knowledge and experience and skills that I've handled a lot of different areas, I believe I can bring to the table the necessary leadership that it's going to take to move this school district forward. Thank you.
My name is Joe Gatz. I'm actually the current Kent County High School PTSA president. I'm also the current Kent County Youth Softball League president as well. So I have the joy of working with many, many children on a day-to-day basis. From a career standpoint, I'm the current manager of the Food Service Division for Twinnings of London here in the United States. I have approximately about 127 employees that report to me. And with that comes the experience of managing contracts and also financial responsibilities with food purveyors and those folks like we have here in this school district. And one that I can also add to that is that I've served in various church leadership roles over the past six and a half years. I'm very proud to be a former senior warden and also best member at a former church. And I think the most important fact that I can bring to the table now is that I have children in the school system. And I'm married to the 2015 Teacher of the Year for Kent County Public Schools. And it gives me the absolute joy to be able to live day-to-day, to see what they do, what they go through, some of the challenges that they experience on a day-to-day basis. And to be able to see that teacher point of view and also understand, I too was also part of the, being in the audience at the consolidation process, and it was a very hard time for our schools, as it was five years ago. And there's a trend here that's continuing and the trend isn't stopping. We're facing declining enrollment that goes back to 1997. And I think now's the time to look at the future, bring new ideas to the table, and make the change. Thank you.
Is there a viable way to maintain current number of schools in view of falling enrollment and budgetary constraints?
Well, we take a look at some of our enrollment numbers going back to 1997 here in the school district. We've seen a 30% decrease in elementary school students. We've seen a 35% decrease in middle school, as well as a 24% decrease in high school enrollment. We haven't really done anything to change that. We've seen it, we've kind of sat back as a community and really have not taken the opportunity to figure out what was going on or what we can do to stop this. And part of my proposals, you know, taking a look at where we are, I had mentioned earlier, you know, I think it's imperative that the board of education be the catalyst, be the forward-thinking group in the county, to bring all of the shareholders together, to bring the county government, to bring all of our local folks that have a stake, parents, different folks that can really look at the future and identify what we can do in our community, as well as look at the future and where we need to be. One of my goals as well is that I know that, you know, reading in the papers and attending some meetings, you know, there are areas in our current budget that we can cut back, but it's not going to stop unless we have children. And we need to have children here in the county. There's always a topic of those folks that have taken their kids to private school and to other districts. And I think that's a matter of trust. And I think that we have to make sure that we let those parents know that we're listening and that we trust them and that they can trust us and that we can do something for them. But in our current format today, when I look back and I look and see where we are, I don't believe this is the right path and we need to affect change. And I think everyone, all of the parents, all of the folks in this room, we need to bring our voices together.
But I believe before we can make any decision, and some of the things that didn't happen before was that there really needs to be a complete look at all the different resources and avenues that are available before even thinking about closing a school. Three ideas that I'd like to try to bring to the table would be this. Develop a nonprofit organization that would be available to raise money outside the current funding situation that would be directly earmarked going to work with the schools. This is already being done in other school districts in other states. There had been some talk at one time about developing a magnet school system. We have these, this small student body that could be moved around to localize their education in smaller classroom settings where they can focus on different things that are more suited to their career path. And thirdly, and this is done in Newmarket Elementary School, I think in Dorchester County, is development of tax credits to businesses that are allowed to fund work that goes on in the schools. So I'd like to see those things happen before I even start talking about closing any particular facility.
No one really wants to see a school closed. We heard that loud and clear during the consolidation process. It wasn't a decision to keep all schools open just putting off the inevitable. We, number of students keep decreasing. I can foresee a way that we can keep all schools open. Maybe we do have too many elementary schools. In the 1970s until middle school consolidation six years ago, there were four elementary schools. But no community wants to lose a school. We can bring it open so the community wouldn't lose a school. It gets healthy for a town to have a school that they support. Now, I can see that as a possible way to help maintain the current number of schools. Have the community come together to support the school with things that are particular for their community school. There is a reason to think that decline in economics and with the school wage population is stabilizing and could be reversed. Even the consultant study that was presented saw that stabilization was occurring. They even forecast a slight increase in the next 10 years. This was before the county announced the fiber internet project, which everybody is hoping will bring in jobs and money and obviously jobs, school wage characters. Our children shouldn't be on the bus any longer than they really need to be. Children should be attending the school that's closest to their community. The students in corporate limits of Chestertown shouldn't be having to be bused away from Chestertown. Are there other ways? There are. One way is possibly dividing grades for second, third, and preschool, kindergarten, first, second, one school, and fourth, fifth, and sixth, and then other. But what we have to do is have all options to be explored.
Consolidation, in my opinion, there's no right or wrong answer. But the path to whatever we want to do as a community has to be well calculated and precise. My view is we can try to keep the schools open as well as we can. We have to be proactive in pursuing grants and outside funding. We need to be innovative in our approach to find resources. Our lack of economic growth strains the budget, but should not strain our creativity to secure funds. We as elected school board members, if elected, must have vigilance in the success of the youth. We have to fight for the youth. The key thing that everyone seems to forget when we're doing all this consolidation talk, what is best for the kids. We have to focus on that part. Proactive, you can go out and search for grants. I was a part of a team that went out and secured $130,000 of grant money from the state to help Kent County kids. So it can be done, but you have to be persistent and willing to take the long road and fight for it. It's a tall order and it will not be an easy task. Due to ongoing student decline, and as all candidates said, that's a hard thing to subject to on state and local funding. State and federal funding bases the kids, you know, the number of the kids as far as how they fund us. But with the decline in budget, this has been foreseen for years. In 2010, to elect to add an elementary school, and then five years later, we want to take one away, we're punishing the community. No one wants to see a community with no school because schools drive economic growth, schools drive business opportunities. It's not just one entity's job or one organization's task to do this. The school board has to work with the community, private stakeholders, businesses, nonprofits, and the community as a large to try to do what's best. And after all proactive ways are evaluated and went through, if it's best to close schools because it just didn't work out, then we might have to close some, but I'm for keeping schools open.
There is a viable way to try to keep the schools open and it happened when the county commissioner stepped up and gave us the extra money that we weren't expecting to receive. So all three commissioners really stepped up and helped the school system out. What we have to do as a board, we have to, with a superintendent and the staff, we have to get together and try to figure out what ways we can even crunch their memories even more because they bought us some time. Probably realistically, we can make it two, maybe three years because I've been on the board for 10 years and eight out of the 10 years, we've had a declining enrollment. You have, they gave the teachers pay raises, so each year, teachers are asked for a step and when can you do that? That's more money out of the budget or that goes to the budget. And bus driver contracts are coming up after this next coming year after 2017. So we have to renegotiate a contract with those contractors. So I don't think anybody's going to work for less or the bus drivers are going to want to drive a bus for less. So obviously, it's going to cost more money and there's a pretty good huge part of our budget that goes toward salary of the employees. So realistically, we can get two to three years out of it. Hopefully, the county commissioners, they had this plan with this high-speed internet. They're hoping it will bring some business to Kent County and we're just going to work with them and see what we can do.
What proposals are you willing to support to address the drug problem in our schools?
While I agree that there are drugs in our schools, are there any school system that doesn't have one? And I don't see ours as being any worse. But in general, there's a drug problem, period. Drugs are filtering into and through a county, just as everyone, every place else in the state. There is a problem in the school. Is it any worse than one in the community? All the schools get them to do is to educate their students as to the dangers of drugs. But when are the outside influences? That's difficult. Many kids are seeing their parents and other relatives doing drugs, smoking cigarettes and drinking alcohol as part of their daily life. Health education is in the system and that's where we need to keep it moving. Health program perhaps should be expanded, is one example. Being healthy, health awareness, valuable life lesson, those lessons that will make a child be be prayer for the world. And I've heard some people speak of the DARE program and how it needs to be brought back. I'm not against this program or any other similar program, but they aren't free and aren't here right now due to loss of grant funding over the years. So let's as a community explore how these programs can be funded by grants and other means. Actually fixing the drug problem of the area is the best way of fixing any drug problem that may be in the school.
No one signs up to do education and become a teacher and think drugs or homelessness or food problems are going to be a part of your daily job, but that's the world and community that we live in nowadays. So we have to accept that task as educators. Prevention starts at home though. The parents should be involved. I think the schools should play a secondary role as a support system to assist those type of situations. There are agencies that specialize in drug prevention and drug use. They should be doing the main stage with the kids and the families. Any way we can help, we should help. But in pertaining to the youth, it's hard to tell a child who watched their mom, uncle, or brother get high. I think drugs are a problem in Kent County with the rise of heroin and prescription drugs. It needs to be focused on youth because most drug dealers don't have an age limit and kids are easily influenced to use drugs. So we need to be always aware that they need to be educated on the rights and wrongs of drugs. But once again, with the youth, when you see your uncle, your brother go to jail for it, it glamorizes it to some of these kids and they think it's cool and acceptable. Social media pushes drugs like it's something everyone should be doing, as well as the rappers or friends, whatever it is, drugs are becoming cool and hip. As an educator or a system that educates, we need to try to change that and make kids relatable. Some of the things we should do, bring speakers who actually were on drugs and recovered. Not only that, form a forum where, what we do at Bay Side Hoya's, we have a forum where kids speak their mind about drugs. Good or bad, we want to hear your opinion because we can't help you if we don't know what you think about the situation. A lot of our kids don't like drugs. A lot of kids need to make their friends not like drugs. So if we can do that as far as prevention, then just assist the agencies and organizations as well as the families any way we can with drugs. It'll be a hard battle, but it needs to be done on all fronts.
I feel schools are just a mirror of our society. Is there drugs in the schools? I mean, you afford to say no, but is there a drug problem in schools? There's not a drug problem in our schools. There are students that have a drug problem. What we have in place now, we have a resource officer at the Kent County High School who works for the sheriff's office. Superintendent Couch is direct contact with the sheriff's place. If there's something in the community that needs to be known, the administration in all the buildings are letting them keep an eye out for certain things. But the best thing that we have for them right now is the teachers and administrators, it doesn't matter if you're a custodian or a cafeteria worker, you have relationships with students in the building and you just listen and they come to you because a lot of them need someone to talk to and that's where you get a lot of your heads up what's going on. So there are programs which we need to keep addressing, which is getting parents involved because like Mr. Queen said, it should start at home. A lot of these cases, they don't have a home life, but they need to be educated and there are programs out there for which these students can be educated if there's a need.
There are three things that occur in a community when there's a drug issue. First of all, the community wants to ignore that it doesn't happen. Second of all, easy access to drugs and alcohol. And thirdly, an unwillingness to truly address the problem. This is what I want to do. We already have in place Character Council. Character Council is an education program that teaches people how to be better people. And this was so easy, I found online a drug curriculum known as NARCANON, NARCANON Drug Education Program. It's a curriculum that can be brought into the public school systems just like Character Council, where kids can have an opportunity to at least learn about the dangers of addictions. Number two, I would bring in certified drug counselors into the schools to teach the program because I think it's important that they need to know from people who have suffered from this disease, how they can best get through that. Now, we're in a right time for this type of discussion to happen because the state of Maryland has allocated great funds to help deal with education and prevention in terms of drug addiction and drug abuse. And right around the corner, we have one of the largest drug treatment centers right here in Kent County that helps deal with that problem. So there's no reason why we can't partner and tap into those resources and bring that into the school to at least not acknowledge, to at least acknowledge the fact that we do have a problem and acknowledge the fact that we want to do something about it.
I found it interesting, this was the one question that, you know, taking a deeper look into options and where we are and just some statistics that I found online. Actually, the National Institute on Drug Abuse released a study December 2014 that stated that eighth, 10th, and 12th graders had seen a general decline in drug use. However, marijuana use in schools has been relatively stable. So then I dialed back and looked into, you know, parent involvement and I agree with the gentleman's comments on parent involvement and how important it is. You know, 42% of children of parents who speak to their children regularly about drugs are 42% less likely to use drugs. The sad part is that only 25% of parents actually speak to their kids. So when you look at that, you know, I am all for bringing in a program, one of the programs that I found, and there are many out there as we heard here a few minutes ago, the Red Ribbon Campaign, which is actually started in 1980 by the National Family Partnership. It is a collaboration where the PTSA groups come in, local parents join this, local folks in the community actually join this initiative to help our kids, our teenagers, to understand and to actually bring awareness and advocacy and also bring literature, resources to support these children with programming and other tools. But I think we can also start younger than teenagers. I think that there's opportunities with fifth graders in elementary schools and it doesn't have to be sad, it doesn't have to be gloomy, but there can be curriculum that can be created that can actually bring children in to open the discussion. As a child, I can remember having a great partnership with local law enforcement and health officials and even my principal. And we had that old board where all of these horrible drugs were covered in shellac and you could barely, and it was so effective. And I can remember looking at that and saying, I never wanted to do that. You know, so I think we have a great opportunity here to really kind of turn the tide, you know, it's really there for us, right in front of us.
We now are going to take some time for the audience to pose questions.
I'm a former high school teacher, but I'm very concerned, I taught high school math. I'm very concerned about where vocational education is placed now in high schools. I really think not every kid needs to go to college and I think we need a good vocational education department. And I'm addressing my question to whoever wants to answer.
I think here in Kent County, we actually are at an advantage compared to some of our fellow counties here on the eastern shore. There's Caroline County who's struggling to find a CTE program, but I think it's important that when you're at the high school and you see the culinary, the ag, the carpentry, the healthcare, it goes on and on. I think it's very important because as you mentioned, not every child has a path that they're going to go to college. And we have, we have programming and we have a structure that is just, that other counties just admire, to the point where they actually come to our county to gain training, to see what we're doing because they hear as to how great and how these children that really came into high school not knowing what they were going to do because they weren't on that career path, that they can actually, they come out feeling great. And I think it's kudos to the board of ed and the administration of public schools because I think it's a great, it's a great situation. I personally would love to see some other vocational areas be brought in as well.
Yes, I agree with Joe and I think the programs that they have at the high school are great and are serving our students well. In order for that to expand, we have to reach out to business because a lot of these kids will leave these programs at the school and they go right directly into a job that's being offered right here in Kent County. The greatest service that they've had out there has been the nursing and the culinary arts trades. These people, these young people have been able to go right out into nursing homes and hospitals to work. They've been able to go right out into restaurants and work and in some cases, even start their own businesses. One of the things that I advocate is the inclusion of a junior achievement program where people have learned how to become entrepreneurs and take these skills and become business owners that we don't have to send them out to find a job. They can become job creators with these skills that they learn in the high school.
Very lucky because we have a comprehensive high school, which is college and career ready. We have nine vocational, well, it's called CTE now, but when we were in school, it's vocational programs. The newest one we put on it was the Teacher Academy, which when the students pass that, they come out and they're, they can be a certified IA instructional assistant right out of high school. So we have CNA with the nursing program, you come out as a CNA. We have the radio station, we have auto mechanics where you come out and you can be certified when we're right into a mechanical job at somebody's garage. So pre-engineering, we just have, we have a lot to offer these students because there are, we are in such a rural community that a lot of these students are, we are in such a rural community that a lot of these students do not go to a college.
Everything they name is great, like, I'm pretty sure the kids love culinary, they love auto mechanics, but jobs, we don't have jobs here in Kent County, so how are you going to train a kid to come out in the community and get a job? You got to connect with the kids and be relatable to them to find out what they really want to do. I'm, I'm pretty sure enrollment is high in culinary, auto mechanics and things, and these majors, nursing, but is this what the child sees themselves doing twenty, fifteen years down the road? I'm an advocate of vocational schools. We teach that all kids in our program, you might not be a four-year student, but we do push them for branches of the military, and we do push them for two-year programs or trade school majors, masonry, electricians, et cetera. But the kids have to understand how valuable these resources are to them that we are offering them, just to have the class sign up and go to culinary, which wins a lot of awards, and I had the food about two weeks ago, it is good. But the kids just might look at it as, we're eating, we're eating food, taking time, we're cooking. How many of these kids are programmed to be chefs? How many of these kids are programmed to own their own food businesses? And Mr. Gatz, he said, high school, we got to come down lower. As early as we can present options to kids, we need to present them, third grade, fourth grade, it's never too, too early for a kid to start dreaming about what they want to do in life. Our resources have to expand though, because funding plays a part in a lot of what we're doing. So if we can't keep all our schools open, sooner or later it's going to come when we have to cut some of these programs, but our children in the community still need to be programmed to be successful outside of the school after they get the primary education from us.
I, I think pretty much everything's been said, can be said. My view is that we have a very robust vocational program that can only get better. I really believe that there are a few gaps in there, as Mr. Queen said, John said, that masonry, electricians, plumbers, I think those are the trades that are actually going to be what's going to be needed, and those aren't in the school, and I would like to see them in the school. But one of the things that we have to look at is that education does not start or stop at the high school level. Doesn't make any difference which trade you go into, you're going to be learning for the rest of your life, and that's one of the things we have to teach our kids, that you're not going to stop learning just because school's out.
All the candidates, how can the board better support teachers in teaching?
School climate and student achievement are two of the things that I really, really push for. Teachers should have the right to be able to teach in the classroom, and a student should have the right to be able to learn. That means there are some students, and this is not a popular statement, but there are some students that just don't do well in a traditional classroom student, a traditional classroom setting. That means that sometimes we have to find ways to properly educate those who do better in limited situations. Now, as a teacher, I want to be able to come into my classroom, and I've been able to come into my classroom and know that I have, first of all, the support of my administrator if I have to deal with a difficult situation. That's important. Number two, as an administrator, I need to know that that teacher has done everything they possibly had, could have done to help deal with the situation before coming to my office. That means we got to be able to talk to the parents, not be afraid of the parents, reach out to the parents, and when I sit down with all the data and all the information of how I have tried to deal with your child in a positive manner, that way, that way I can come to you and say, this is what we need to do to help make your child better, help have your child have better success in the classroom. Hope that answers your question.
If I was an elected board member, the first word I have to really say is trust. A lot of teachers feel like they're handicapped in the classroom for various reasons, whether it's behavior problems, whether it's poor textbooks, whether it's just bad, whatever it is. A lot of teachers feel like they can't do exactly that, teach and educate, whether they feel like it'd be, you know, retaliation from administration, whether the parents have trust for the teachers, the teachers are in the most uncomfortable situation. We're taking someone else's child for the majority of the day and teaching them how to be productive, productive citizens, productive adults. We need to support our teachers the best way we can, they're strained in the classroom, but at the same time, they have to feel like they can come to board members, they can go to superiors and staff, whether it's a system principal and principal, and voice their opinion, knowing that the best thing happening would be in the interest of that child. A lot of teachers, and I know this personally, a lot of teachers can't go the extra mile because they're scared of retaliation and what might happen if they help a kid at home. A lot of the problems that a teacher enduring in the classroom has to do directly with what goes on at home. With teachers, organizations such as myself in the Bayou, you need that bridge and help to help that teacher in class. A lot of times I can go to a school and the child's been acting up, and they say, Mr. Queen, Mr. Queen, he's one of your guys, can you talk to him? Ask the kid what's wrong, just to give that support to the teacher and say, hey, you're not fighting this by yourself, if you do need help, don't be afraid to ask. I think a lot of teachers wish they can go and go that extra mile, whether it's to other organizations or superiors and get that support, teachers do need more support. With them being underpaid as long as they've been underpaid, some people just show up and feel like babysitters. So now we're just now getting them to step three, but we want them to know that just as valuable as that kid's future is, your future hand is county and this community as a teacher is valuable to us as well. One, we really have to be connected enough with the kids and the parents and the teachers to know, are these kids being singled out? Are these kids being picked on for prior offenses? A lot of these kids that are, that are in these programs don't feel like there's any forgiveness for their mistakes. So you make a mistake, whatever it is, and you go sit over here in this classroom for three months, six months, until a teacher or administrator feel you can come back into the classroom. That's teaching kids, you can be separate and discriminated against you. We're going to sit you over there no matter what you've done, and we're going to keep you there. That's not conducive in life. I wish at my job, I could go sit in the corner and take thirty minutes out, or come back two weeks later and come back to the classroom, but that's, oh, to my job, but that's not realistic. A lot of these kids, middle school, too young, elementary, too young, you're teaching them that you can be punished for a mistake. A lot of us in this room have made mistakes throughout our life over and over again. We got to learn how to use their mistakes to guide them down the right path. A lot of times when we think about kids, the first thing we do, punish the kid, punish the kid, punish the kid. Are you going to punish that parent who might not be home? Are you going to punish that grandparent who got to take care of three or four of their grandbabies because the mom isn't home? I think we need to do more and think better about those type of programs where you actually seclude kids from the classroom, because my personal experience, the kids don't like it, they feel intimidated, they feel like they're singled out, and that's coming from me, and I've dealt with over two hundred kids in this community, so a lot of kids feel like that's not what they want to do, and a lot of times kids just want approval to you, they can be successful and they can do good. We, as elected members of the Board of Education and educators in the system, have to give them that chance, whether they earn it or not, that's their right, that's our job.
Now, one thing we did several years back, we had wishes from the teachers, what can we do with these disruptive students? So we put an alternative program in place at the high school, and we brought in the High Roads program, which a lot of the counties have gone to, it's specialized in behavior, they're trained in behavior specialists, and what they do is, kids act out for different reasons, and if there's a constant disruption and if it's marked, they're put into this program out there, these, these teachers are trained professionally, and it is so successful that we started a program at the middle school, and we have one at Garnet now for, for elementary school students. Speaking with Cecil County Public Schools, we're at a board conference, they, they just raved about this program, and they started at the high school level and they got it down into their elementary schools, so they can give the younger kids some, some training and get some guidance before they get to the high school level. And another way we support teachers, we put a lot of technology into the classrooms, we put in whiteboards, lots of computers, so the teachers have, are up to date with all the new technology.
I think at the end of the day, you know, as I mentioned earlier, five years ago, we went through consolidation, we've just gone through the discussion, I think we have to let our teachers know that their jobs are stable. You know, when we go through this, through this process, you know, teachers get concerned, we see teachers, administrators leaving, you know, and we have to make sure that if we can fix some of the larger issues, we can, we can let them know that they're okay. I also think that we can support them, whether it's PTA groups or little things, you know, whether it's small gifts for teachers, they come in, you know, on Valentine's Day, they have a little pack of, of tissues or something, and pencils or little things that really mean a lot to, to every one of us, that make us feel better, but I think we can support our teachers from that standpoint. Technology, we are far ahead of some schools in our system today where we are on technology standpoint, it's actually fantastic for the size of public schools that we are. I think, you know, the support that the administration gives all the way down and being there with, with their ability to collaborate amongst other teachers, their colleagues, and their certain, certain discipline of education, I think bodes well. And, and I certainly, being married to a teacher, I hear about some of the spirited conversations, which I think is great, and I think that's what these teachers need. But I think we're doing a, a good job, we just have to go the next step and let them know they're okay, that we appreciate them.
The best way is to give the teachers the resources and the encouragement they need to, to do the job. As has been mentioned around here, they have the technology, they have a lot of things, but sometimes, maybe they don't realize what they need. I've seen classes where I believe that the teacher needed some classroom management skills, that's one thing that we can help, we can encourage that. I believe the mentoring program for teachers is still on, and if it's not, it should be there and it should be pushed greatly, I mean, it should be one of the key things, is have mentors for, teacher mentors, ones that's been here for twenty, thirty years and retired, to help our brand new teachers, especially those that are just out of college. And sometimes they don't have all the skills they need for classrooms.
What can the board do to move toward achieving better racial balance among our teachers and administrators in the school system?
When we think diversity, look at our school board now, there's no diversity. When we think more ethnic, racial, whatever you want to call, look in this room right now, who's in here? Where's the citizens? Where are the demographic of kids who we really sit in that hour and say, you'll be okay, but don't give them the resources? I think as a board member, I want to gather my thoughts completely for this one. There's not a lot of African-American men or other ethnic men in the school systems. So like, and Mr. Gatz, when he says he's talking from his wife's point of view, who was, was teacher at the end, of course, that's outstanding, that's great, but how many kids from the other side of town can really relate to her? And I'm not really saying your wife's wrong, so please don't take it that way. A lot of people look at Kent County public school system and say, there's no diversity, they don't care about us. A lot of people sit up here and say, we're doing great, statistics show we're still at the bottom third. Statistics show we've still been doing a consolidation the last ten years, so to make these type of statements, we're not helping anyone. You can count right now on our complete school system, me guessing, it wouldn't be more than ten African-American male or female teachers in the environment. You have to relate to these kids. I know personally, a lot of kids will say, I don't want to listen to that white man. Whoa, 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 you can't talk about people like that, it's not about race, it's not about color, it's about them making you the best person you can be, and a lot of kids don't understand that or can't relate to that. A lot of teachers might not care one way or another, but in the community that I service, that's one of the big problems, and they don't think that the school at large cares about it to even address that issue.
I think, I think for us, when we take a look at, when we have a position that opens in the, at the Board of Ed or in the school system, I think it's our duty to make sure that we vet all of the candidates that are coming in to apply for that position. And, and I'm not sure in the statistics as to whether they're African-American or Hispanic or whites, but I think it's our due diligence to take a look at the candidates, to look at their strengths, to look at what they bring to the table, that, that what they can do to help better our public schools. And I think that's where we need to, we need to look at. I'm certainly in favor, I, I have no issues with, with any type of skin color as being, as being an issue. I think that the best candidates that apply for a position need to be placed in those positions to better the experience and give every children in our school system the opportunity to succeed.
I spent twelve years in Marion Middle School in Wilton, Delaware. Wilton, Delaware is pretty, you know, it's a little north of Rountree Beach. In that school, I was the only African-American teacher in that building, but we always hit our annual year progress and always hit our numbers. And we had the most diverse population within the district, in Cape County, the school district. And what is that, what is that, what I mean by all this? Yes, we do need diversity in the classroom, but more importantly, we need teachers who truly care about the education of the children first. We can get a diverse population of teachers, but if they don't care about what's going on with the kids, it won't matter at all. Number two, the school board needs to come out of this ivory tower. I would like to see the school board, as a member of the school board, to be more involved in the community, coming out to where these places are that have these diverse populations, so that people who live in these neighborhoods can realize that we are human beings just like they are, and that we empathize about the things that they care about as well. Thank you.
I'll be the first one to agree that we are not a very diverse school system. But as Reverend Oliver says, we got to have the best people. We just can't go out and grab Joe Bo off the street because he happens to read the demographic book. It's not the way the society should work, it's not the way we work anymore. We got to pick the best person for the job. But one of the things we have to do is make it so that everybody will want to come to Kent County to teach, because if they don't apply, they're not going to be selected, but if they, they're, and Kent County is a school system that is welcoming to everybody and every, and it's one of those systems that, top system, people's going to want to come here. So you may end up getting that diverse population of teachers just by being great.
What we're doing now, we're partnering with Chesapeake College, and because this is a concern up and down the eastern shore, it's not only Kent County, eighty percent of the recent grads coming out as an education were, were minorities. So on the, on the average of, there was four twenty-two teachers needed last year on the eastern shore, and there was eighty-five unfilled positions, that, that's up and down the shore. So that was eighty-five substitutes that were filling the classrooms up and down the shore, and so we are going to Morgan State, Coppin, schools like that, to try to draw the African-American teachers, and we're going to try to bring them into our school system to show them that, hey, this is the eastern shore, because what's happening, when we go to these job fairs, that they find right to the tables of French orgies, Baltimore City Counties like that, because they get more money, they have a lot of debt to pay off, and a lot of them get bonuses that they sign, up to twenty thousand dollars, and that's, that's a lot for a bonus to sign if you're coming out of college.
This is why, you know, diversity is a big problem in Kent County. We haven't even mentioned the Hispanic demographic yet. When we voted to take Melton away, that's the largest Hispanic demographic in Kent County, I think it's like twenty-two percent, if I could be, I'm close to that. They feel alienated when we say we're going to take your school, they already don't have any voice. How many times have you went to any event in the community and seen a large number of Hispanics or a large number of African-Americans? To my colleagues on, on candidates, a point about the qualified person, I don't care about your scholigic or paperwork or your doctrine, can you relate to the kids? I don't have no college education, but I can relate to the kids, I can make a change in a child's life, so sometimes the best candidate doesn't always have the paperwork to back that, it's the it factor. You need to have it to know how to identify it in the teacher. I can go in a classroom and in thirty seconds I can tell you who the troublemakers are and, and the students, and is that teacher capable of handling that classroom? You have to be able to identify the it factor. I agree, it has nothing to do with race when it comes to education, but a large proportion of the minorities aren't being educated well for one reason or another in our county, whether it's the novellations or can relate to the teachers, whether it's poor funding, whether it's just the curriculums is not too good, but that has to be fixed, that void is too big, and we're not preparing minorities to go into the world and be productive by any means, which relates to a lot of the things we were talking about early, the drugs, usage and things like that. When you don't have a hope for education in your future, what else you got to look forward to? So they start feeling like they're in a box and they're confined to just being what everyone else wants them to be, and that's nothing in life, you go to jail, you work at Agne, and then your life is probably over, a lot of kids feel that way. You have to know these kids personally, their family, and be in the community like Oliver said, to said, to get that feeling and that vibe to know when you're identifying teachers correctly.
Just real quick, with the, with the way the family structure has changed over the last, you know, fifteen, twenty years, with our single parent homes, we've been on the rise with grandparents raising kids, what innovative ways, and this is for anybody or everybody, what innovative ways would you come up with to try to engage families to get them more involved with the learning process? Because one of the ways we can support teachers is getting parents or grandparents, whoever is the positive influence in a child's life, to be more involved. And I think that just the way the, this hustle and bustle of life is, people are always thinking, you know, "I need to get to that meeting," or that meeting's not conducive, the time schedule's not conducive for that parent to get there, they have to work. So what innovative ways can, can we come up with to get these parents involved that they ultimately, that will help solve a lot of the problems?
I think, I think at the end of the day, we, we as, as Board of Ed members and also right down through the system, you know, we really have to find ways to make, whether it's the after-school program that's being taken care of, we have to make it easy for parents' lives and for people to be able to engage and be a part of what we're doing. It could be programmed, it could be, you know, how do we reach out to these kids? You know, do we look at apps that, that are available for parents that they can engage? We're in such a, such a, a, a social media-driven society right now that can we communicate that way, you know, rather than trying to make a call, we never get anyone at home? You know, I've seen teachers in the system actually make a call or stop at home to a parent, you know, and they're, they're right, they're thinking right away that, "Oh my heavens, you know, what is going on here?" And, and just to let the parents know that things are okay, you know, or to make that call that, you know, "Your student is doing fantastic, and we know it was kind of rough in the beginning, but things are really working out." And when parents see that, that the system cares, they do get engaged because they trust and they feel what's there. You know, I think going back to the, the social media piece, some of the, as, as most of you have seen, we've seen a lot of, and Mr. Queen had mentioned, there's a lot that's been online and different, different communications, both negative and positive, but if you notice, it's created engagement, you know, and we need to listen to parents and have those focus groups and having them be able to come to us and say, "You know, I trust them. I know exactly where they're coming from and they're there for me," and I think that's, that's a start.
The local management board has, and Paul knows this too, that we have a lot of programs that are available for parents and, and other caregivers that get involved in the help relate to their children and these difficult family dynamics. Uh, I would encourage the school system to get more closely involved with, with these initiatives, either to, to bring, once again, to make the school board come out of this ivory tower and become more a part of the community. Uh, in a lot of our communities, people see school as that place that they themselves were not very successful. And they, when they were a student, they didn't have a good time there, so they're very reluctant to go into the school in the first place. Number two, the teacher or sometimes administrator hides behind the, the wall of the school because they're safe there. So both parties need to come together a little more so they can really find out what it is that we want to do. Um, second of all, um, I want to piggyback on something that Joe said, and, and improve our after, after-school and before-school programs. Right now, they have one that's going on, but the, the kids have to pay it to be a part of it. There's gotta be some funding out there, some grant money out there that will allow these children to be a part of these programs without any cost out of pocket. That in itself is a hindrance. Um, and then maybe the, the idea, we're always quick to write a referral on a student who does something bad. How about the implication, the implication of a positive behavioral referral? I, I, you did a great job today, Johnny, Suzie, here's a, here's a referral that you can take on to your mom and dad to show that you've had a successful day today. Number two, that, that referral also is followed up with a phone call. So all, all goes now to the school district, making the effort to come out, um, to where the parents and grandparents are.
It, it, it's a concern. It's been a concern of mine in groups that I've been in a relationship with for years, is how do we get out to people, whether it's the parents, the community in general? It's hard to do. Sometimes people get behind a thought that, oh, we have meetings that's best fit for us as the board. Not necessarily the right thing. We gotta look at how it is for the community. We need to communicate to the community in the way that they want to be communicated to. And everybody's different. Some people are great with social media, Facebook, texting. Other ones, they want that personal experience. And, you know, we have feet kids and parents that goes anywhere from struggling to even live to living in plantate, in ivory towers, if using the word that Reverend Oliver said. You know, they have plenty of money, and it's how we get to all of them. We need to do it however we need to do it. And one of the things I believe board members should do, and one of the things I definitely will do, is get out into the community. Go to the PTA meetings, go to community events and talk to people. I'm almost everywhere, I'm off, and I'm running into people and talking to people, and it's the way we get things done.
My engagement is a little different, and I think this is one of the things that separate me from everyone, right? When you say you're in the community or we gotta get in the community, everyone in this room has seen me in the community once or twice at the minimum, doing something with parents and kids. You gotta have these parents willing to work with you. You know how you engage them? Go to their house. Hey, your son wasn't in school today, this is the third day he's been absent. Instead of sending that letter home saying, "Hey, your kid in trouble for being absent," how many teachers actually go to these parents? How many teachers or board members are in the community actually seeing what's going on with the people they're servicing? They elect us to office, and then soon as we get elected to office, we forget all the bikes and complaints they have. Me personally, anytime I see board and education members, it's typically at one of three places, forums like this, the football game, or a big basketball game. Now, I don't follow the softball and the cross much, so they couldn't be there, but they're not in the community every day throwing events. If we're the board of education, we want to have parents involved, throw an event, invite parents. One of the things I do as a college C program, one of our votes is caregiver development. We want them to know, it's not just important for your child to go to school, but it's important that you participate and you become a part of this program. So after that, you start having them come around and saying, "I can trust him and talk to him." That word "trust" is something that parents have lost. When they went to school, they didn't feel like they had trust, and now that their kids are going to school, they don't feel like they have trust. We gotta get that bond back, but the only way you can do it is come down out the ivory tower and go down to the grassroots where I'm at every day of the week, when I come out my house all year long. A kid, a family member in the community, or their parents, know they can come to me and know their problem will get addressed, or I will point them to the right, uh, resources to help them out. We just gotta be more proactive. Saying we're gonna do it and showing no action is what's typical in Kent County right now, and that has to change if we are really trying to provide a bright future for our youth.
We are, that's a, that's, that's a great question, Paul, because that's the million-dollar question, is how can you get to these people that are working two or three jobs, raising grandkids? I mean, we're all in the same boat. I mean, it's, it's a, it's an issue our community has, and it's not only our community, it's everybody. And that's, that's, that's a very, very tough question, and it's a very good point, because the ones that suffer are the children. And a lot of these kids are little, and they're being raised by a great father. Everybody has a story. So what we can try to do, we had, at the last board meeting, we were approached by a company that's Alphabet, which is a, a full and aftercare program, which we're gonna try to put into, uh, try to see if we can put it into a couple of elementary schools. And that way, we have care for the kids before and after school, because a lot of kids, if they're being raised by a parent or whatever, they have to go to work early, and the kids sitting home by their self. This way, they can be at a school, have some guidance, have somebody tutor them on, uh, teach, and then, uh, open up some more dialogue with those, the guardians or the guardianship of whoever's raising these children, because they are the ones that are suffering in this.
A quick about the grandparent thing, and it's just a quick note to say that the school board has made moves in the right direction by partnering with the local management board, and yesterday evening, they brought in this gentleman from Florida. And it was only advertised by word of mouth. Parents, kids, grandparents came out to this event because the school board decided that they were gonna make a move to try to do something a little bit different. So it, it can be done, and it's already been, been proven that. And there were about two hundred people out last night, all based on word of mouth, all based on people who weren't willing to serve, um, the community in a completely different way. And I, and I had to make that note because I just noticed that Dr. Couch was back there. One of the things that she did that impressed me the most was she had on gloves and was serving pizza. That was, that, that's, that's the kind of stuff that the school board needs to do more of. I'm sorry to cut you off.
But how much of that is just political or agenda-driven? Like, the Bayside Hoyas is doing exactly what every candidate up here have suggested. We're in the community, I'm engaged in tutoring, we do that. College preparation, we do that. Help the parents out with whether it's financial literacy or trying to find jobs, we do that. Bayside Hoyas did not reinvent the wheel. We are just proactive and we're willing to work with anybody regardless of what their agenda is, because we care about the kids first. Hooking up with, and I'm not using local management just to say it, but just hooking up with any entity just to say, "Hey, we're doing this," it still isn't affecting our community. You can sit up there and blow bubbles all day long, but if these kids and these parents aren't seeing real change in their household, then everything we're talking is a make-believe story to them.
My question is, I was at an LMB sponsored event that made me late till I appeared this evening out to Community Center, and there's a generation a little younger than myself that just feel like hopelessness, helplessness, which leads to loneliness and the drug problem and addictions. So in the school system, I do think we have some responsibility for teaching kids more on just how to bubble in on a scale card, um, just how do you teach self-esteem and pride and oneself? And then you can be, what makes someone employable? Or even do they have the skill set to, you know, go out and do something different? And sometimes you just need to take a risk and move if what you want isn't here, like don't expect a handout or entitlement. So that's why I'm coming to all these meetings, seeing who are the movers and the shakers in Kent County, who can my kids look up to other than their parents or grandparents? So I'm just, I guess my question, because I know you're the, what is your question? How do you feel the schools have a responsibility for teaching like self-pride, self-esteem?
Once a person understands how to manage the resources that they have, they automatically begin to have a cer, a certain sense of self-pride and self-worth. That way, they know that when they, when they're able to earn a dollar from doing whatever in the neighborhood, that they have effective tools to go to use it to make it grow. Um, that's the biggest thing that we usually see with people who quote-unquote have a sense of lost hope. They all feel like they're, they're having self-worth because they have nothing to contribute to their, to their own personal environment. So why should I want to contribute to, to the world in itself? Um, this is extremely politically incorrect, but I am a pastor of, of a church, and I think that there has to be some, and, and we can't do it, but I'm gonna put it out there, there needs to be a thought at least somewhere along the way about a person's spiritual connection to the rest of the world. And I'm gonna leave that alone because I'm gonna get in trouble if I keep on going.
For the spring awards and kind of orientation to events, I had the joy of actually, we had a, we had a, a PTSA general meeting, and I was there early setting up, and I had a, a young gentleman, um, come up and sit down next to me as I was setting up, and he was just talking, you know, and, and he was just kind of working through, asking questions, and he kind of thought that he was, he was, I kind of felt that he was lost a little bit. So we just starting, start talking, you know, "When are you graduated? You know, what do you like to do? You know, where, where do you see yourself?" And after talking with him, he was part of Culinary Arts, he's actually going into the military, and we had a great conversation for about fifteen minutes. And sitting there talking to him, as, as folks started to come in and they were dreading the PTSA sign on the wall when they were there for sports, they, he actually said to me, "Mr. Getz, thank you for talking with me." Because it means so much that someone actually listened, and it was nice to talk to someone that wasn't, you know, my father, because he's a single parent. And I think if we can engage these children and talk to these kids, we've heard it plenty this evening, I think it, it goes well, and it actually serves the children the best. It's the same with young parents as well. And folks, this demographic that, that you mentioned was slightly, slightly younger than you, they have to feel that they can come to us and talk to us, and we need to have these forums or have these sessions or have, you know, the ability for these parents to come in, feel that they can be safe in their conversations, and, and having, having discussions just outside for, and Acme, and, "Oh, you're, you're Joe Getz, you're running for the board." Yes, I am. And sitting there and having them explode, because they have so much inside that they want to talk about, and once they do, they feel great. And I think that's our responsibility as a board down through the system to stop and listen and talk, and I think that'll take a spark.
I want to address the young parents, and I also want to address the PTA. A lot of times, especially in the elementary schools, their timeframe, we have parents coming in, and they look at the PTA, and they're being, must be told, "You're a fundraising organization, you're a fundraising organization." PTA is not a fundraising organization. It's an advocacy group for the parents and their children. Let's work together with the PTAs to help these young parents who are struggling to be parents and help them succeed. Talk to them, help educate them, get programs in and help them working with the PTAs. I think that's where we need to go.
Once again, everything that is being mentioned, I already do on a daily basis. The Bayside Hoyas do it every day, but to answer your question, the reason, and I'm one of those people sometimes that feel like hopeless, because not too long ago, I was a troubled kid, and no one gave me a chance. They thought I was gonna be in jail or dead by sixteen, eighteen years old. So I understand these kids because I'm authentic and can relate to them. We feel helpless because there's no real leadership in our board of education system. As much as people stand up here and talk in circles, you won't see too many of these people in the community changing a child's life directly because that kid cares. When you go somewhere, that kid connects with you or they don't connect with you. It's that simple. So the hopelessness is poor leadership. But the way to change that is start voting for people who haven't been the same, a part of the same fifteen, twenty years of our county just taking a de-escalation and going downhill. We need new ideas, we need people who aren't afraid to take risks and jump out there and do something outside of the norm and outside of the box to start changing things. The demographic above me, age-wise, they're disconnected with our youth. So our youth aren't listening to a lot of people who talk to them, they're not even listening to their parents. What makes people think they're gonna go to school and listen to a teacher? So the hopelessness comes with one, it's a culture disconnect. People can't relate to the culture these kids are going through. Why do you think like that? Why don't you care? Oh, no, I just don't. We have to change that way of thinking and make them more positive and take that negativity out of them. But when you tell them, "You can be something when you grow up." My mom and dad don't find no job. Everybody just can't say, "Kent County doesn't offer me a good school system and a good job, I can up and leave." A lot of the minorities or demographic of kids I deal with, families can't go nowhere. They're stuck here, and they feel like they're stuck in a rut, and they don't see a silver lining in their life. Our job is to change that through education, because with education, you can brighten up a lot of futures and give them a way to go forward.
As I was saying, community groups such as churches getting involved with some of the students, any kind of community groups, Bayside Hoyas, I guess, if they're helping, reaching different, um, sections of the county. But, you know, as school board members, all we can do is try to put some systems into place for the school.